January 12th, 2016, meeting of the McMinnville City Council. And at this time with the meeting called order, I will ask Counselor Scott Hill to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. Once again, for you that haven't been here before, this meeting is being recorded for McMinnville Community Media for broadcast both on Frontier and Comcast, and now our meetings are also streamed live via the Internet courtesy of KLYC. So if you have a cellphone, we ask you to silent your cellphones and please refrain from receiving or sending any text or calls during the meeting for the respect of others. And if you do, we ask that you please go out in the lobby to get that done. So that being said, now's the time in our agenda where we ask citizens who would like to come talk to the City Council about anything that is not on our agenda tonight to come forward. Again, we do have, there's some things we cannot discuss. Of course, I mentioned a topic already on our agenda. We ask for you to wait for that point in time. If the city is in a matter of litigation, we will not be able to discuss anything that has to do with that litigation. If it's a quasi judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled that we know that's scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, we'll have to refrain from discussing those things. And of course, as the mayor, I can limit the comments or the length of the comments given. So that being said, is there anybody in the audience who would like to come and speak to the council on anything on the agenda tonight? Or that is not on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll ask once again, would anybody like to speak to the council on anything that isn't on our agenda tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. Counselors, in your packet was the minutes of the October 27th, 2015 meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Are there any corrections or modifications? If none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the October 27th, 2015 minutes. Moved by Counselor Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Yoder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, all those opposed? Hearing none, let it show the minutes of October 27th, 2015 meeting have been approved. And Rose, before we get to new business, if you could please note for the record that Counselors Manke and Counselor Ruden do have excused absences for this evening. Okay, that takes us to new business. And the first thing, under new business, we have a presentation from your community mediators, Yamhill County. So Marlena, if again, if you would state your name and address, then sign in for the record, please.
My name is Marlena Bertram with your community mediators of Yamhill County, 621 Southeast Rumel Street here in McMinnville. And at this time, I'd like to turn my presentation over to Walt Gowell, who's heard it twice before in the last two weeks. Just kidding. Well, I wonder how much you remember. But this is McMinnville, and McMinnville's special. So I've distributed some packets of information for you. First is our contact card, and that's something that we pass out and distribute far and wide to the law enforcement, social services, at service clubs, neighbor to neighbor. It's a way for folks to get in touch with us. We're kind of a virtual office. When they call that, they get my direct line, and I am there to help them decide if their issue that's troubling them warrants the use of our mediation service, and most often it is. We stand at the ready 24/7, all year long, to have our volunteer mediators work with people in conflict to help them find resolutions that fit their interests. And 90, or 95% of the time that people come to the table in mediation, they walk away with a written agreement that they find does meet both parties' interests. So the process is very effective, and in being a part of finding the solution, parties have a high percentage of the time that the agreement is implemented, unlike sometimes legal routes or legal decisions that they're not a part of finding that solution, it's imposed on them. So when the parties are a part of finding the solution, there's a lot better chance that they actually follow the agreement. Also, in your little materials packet is our most recent annual appeal that's kind of like a newsletter, and has some photos and some information about what we've been up to and what we are intending to do in the next year. So I hope you find that edifying and entertaining. And the third thing is a letter that we've prepared for you. We originally contacted Martha about coming before you in December as an update for the year-to-date, 2015 year-to-date, and the kind of seasonal greetings. I wasn't able to be on the agenda until now, so I've combined that with our annual spring funding requests and included, a little bit early this year, but included our 2014-15 fiscal year McMinnville case statistical summary for an update. So it's a whole year update, which is upon which we base our funding request. So we strive to be as transparent as possible in what services that we provide to McMinnville residents and the cost for our organization. We only have one staff person, that's myself, and we have about 30 volunteer mediators. So we really leverage our resources to provide the services that are mostly free, sometimes with a small charge for like fun parenting plan fees and business-to-business fees, because we find that when there's some charge, then folks have a little skin in the game and they're not coming to the mediation table just to bicker or use their kids in custody battles as footballs. They really come more prepared to work and they get the work done quicker. On the summary, you can see that in the past fiscal year, 1415, we had 109 cases that were from McMinnville. And overall, our cases for McMinnville represent 46.35% of our total cases. Out of the 109 cases, 10 were community, 10 were neighbor to neighbor, 10 were landlord/tenant. The big ones were family custody disputes or parenting plan. The really big one, of course, is small claims. There were 263 residents directly served. That doesn't count the people that weren't impacted by possible conflicts that would have ensued. 73 mediations actually happened. So the operational and staff expense for these cases cost relative to our budget $32,910. Also, on the right part of that top box, it showed that there was 182 volunteer hours, and according to the state valuation, the value of that was about $5,500. This also states the referral sources were far and above the court, referred cases from the courthouse, small claims, and truancy court. Second was former clients, which we really like to see in word of mouth and Internet referrals, because people are self-referring, and that shows that people are believing in the process, believing in the service, and former clients come back because they see that they were helped. Social service came in at nine, law enforcement, government agencies, eight, and then you can see the rest, legal aid, private practice, and housing agencies. So the total case service value for McMinnville residents was $38,377, less the volunteer-valued services. So the actual financial case value supported by McMinnville funds in the last fiscal year was $32,910. I did list the monies received from City McMinnville in 2014 and 2015 right below that. So supporting cases for McMinnville residents, as I said, represented 46, 46 and 35, 35% of our budget and our caseload. On the right, on the, close to the bottom, it shows our budget for this fiscal year. Our request on the right for our program support based on our service last year to McMinnville residents was, as I said, $32,910 less. The same percent of the $12,000 that we received from the county. So our final request figure is $26,885 for continued 24/7 service to residents of McMinnville. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this. I went through it fairly quickly. Many of you are familiar with these, this spreadsheet and the work that we do. In addition to the cases that we do that's reflected on the spreadsheet, we do also do education and training. We provide weekly conflict resolution classes to the juvenile detention center inmates over at the Yamhill County Detention Center. We hold annual basic mediation trainings to generate more volunteer mediators, and also when people take it without the intention of becoming volunteers, we provide more conflict resolution specialists in their families, in their neighborhoods, in their workplaces, even though they're not volunteer mediators, we're still helping build a culture of peace in the community. And we make educational presentations to service clubs, to schools, to colleges, to city departments, to neighborhoods, anyone who asks for them assisted living centers. And if anybody here in this room would like to have a presentation, they need only to call the number on this contact cards. As a special note, this year, we're asking the cities to consider providing contribution to YCM as a service contract. We're trying to move into a more professional relationship, moving out of a place in the budget that is outside agencies, more into a services category where we feel we more appropriately belong. I know Martha has talked to a colleague, I think in Beaverton, who the Beaverton City has a contract with the City of Tigard to provide services, and I've provided her a copy of that contract. So if that's of interest to council members, we appreciate being able to talk about that as well. So it would be based in the same type of information that I presented here. It would just be more of a service contract rather than a request each year out of the general budget.
Okay, council, as we talk about our meeting, this is going to be probably one of those topics of discussion for our goal setting as we, and as we get ready to do our budgeting process. So I'll ask the council at this time, is there any additional information, not necessarily on the presentation, or questions of Marlena, but is there any additional information that the council feels we will need prior to our goal setting or prior to our budget preparation?
I had a quick question. You may have covered this, and I was, I'm looking over the report you gave us last year and this year, and over the total case service value, the little budget block, last year you had a 48.5 supported by grants. What happened with those grants?
Well, we do still get some grants from the state, and we have a small grant from the Jubits Family Foundation, and we took that out this year because we're trying to keep it, the request directly relative to the value, the services that we provide. And we're unsure about grants from year to year. We lost the United Way the year before, and we probably won't get the Jubits grant again this year. And we don't get all the money that we request from all the cities, and so we're just trying to keep it more relative to the service we provide.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Larry, do you have any additional information you'll need? Scott?
I'd agree with you. I think at the, at our budget meeting, we determined that at our annual, at our annual meeting, that we would sit down and really look at our contribution area in a more global approach. And so I think at least this helps prepare us for that discussion.
One piece of information that'd be helpful for me as we go into our goal setting, Marlena, and our thing is, in the case referral sources on your spreadsheet, the courthouse, small claims, and truancy court, specifically courthouse and small claims, are those Yamhill County? Is that from the services that are recommended to your community mediators from Yamhill County? Not necessarily, I know we have the breakdown by the City of McMinnville residents, but what I'm trying to come up with something as far as the referring, the referring agencies?
Well, of those, those referrals from the courthouse, 52 of them were small claims court. One of them was for truancy mediation, and I think two of them were for parenting plans. People went to the courthouse to look at getting parenting plans from the courthouse, and they were told that those don't qualify for Yamhill County mediations. So they sent them to us because the Yamhill County couldn't provide mediation.
And what percent did you say was small claims? Or how many were small claims again?
52.
52.
52 were small claims cases involving McMinnville residents.
And that's 52 out of the 56 shown?
Correct.
Okay. Any more needs of information? No? Thank you for giving us all the information, Marlena.
Thank you for the time.
Okay, that takes us, council, to our next item under new business, and it's a presentation of a proposed agreement between the City of McMinnville and the Amity Fire District regarding ambulance and fire support. So Chief, turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor and counselors, this evening, we're here to just have a short discussion, short, I emphasize short for your purposes, about partnerships within the community from the fire and ambulance service side of things. Historically, mutual aid agreements, automatic aid agreements have been used to help each other out. But as we move forward in times of fiscal responsibility and tightening budgets, we have to start looking at ways to do business better within the fire and ambulance services as partners with our partners. We first took a look at seeing what we could accomplish with Newburgh, and they, there was a lot we could have accomplished, but they chose to look at doing something a little different. But post that, even though a large part of our partners in our community are volunteer organizations, we have the ability to pull resources and start doing things more effectively. And this, what will come before you next meeting, if you give me authorization to before, it'll be an IGA between us and the Amity Fire District, authorizing us to hire, for the City of McMinnville to hire two full-time personnel, 40-hour, part-time-plus personnel to work Monday through Friday. In an effort, the numbers that you see within the memo reflect the 400 and the currency, the potential dollars that we can bring back in are based off of 12, 13, and 14 numbers. Those are conservative numbers, because I prefer not to throw a number out there and then have it turn around and not be at least accurate, particularly in the financial side of things. In 2015, we ran a 10% increase on our ambulance calls. So we ran more than 500 calls, more than 12, 13, and 14 as far as that goes. So I'm confident that the numbers that you're seeing are going to be the minimum amount that we would return in the dollars in that partnership. The individuals within the agreement would become employees of the City of McMinnville. City of, or the Amity Fire District would contribute $10,000 in cash to the project. They would also provide us a place to house and keep the ambulance and provide a workspace for the medics as well as utilities within their fire station. The advantages to this concept are the overall ambulance system that we provide ambulance services to, the ASA 2, which is 450 square miles, including Yamhill, Carlton, Lafayette, Amity, Dayton, and McMinnville. Don't forget us. Yeah, we're the largest user by far. But we cover ambulance for all of those individuals. And in some of our more southern parts of the county of our response district, we have a difficult time getting down into the Dundee and Yamhill, Dayton and Yamhill southern zones of our responsible area. We also have a large number of calls that we use our partners on during this Monday through Friday time span, 8 to 5, 7 to 4, whatever that looks like. In the initial agreement, the hours and the dates are designed by history of the calls that we are using our partners more, or the history of the calls that are in either Amity's response zone or Southern Dayton's response zone. The goal is to provide that extra peak unit in the system that frees up our three 24-hour cars to be available for 911 cars in the core of the system. It's a peripheral unit. It sits out in Amity to improve those response times. But currently, when we use our third 24-hour car out, and it's out of service, and we're left without ambulances, we, the first call is from Newburgh. Well, Amity's a lot closer than Newburgh is, and we can, and that car's our folks, and then also is available to capture those dollars that are currently, that we're not capturing on calls that our partners are taking. So the system is designed ambulance-wide to improve the ambulance capability of our system to all of our partners, with some skin in the game from Amity, which is the first time we've ever gotten to a point where our partners are willing to contribute some cash and some, and some resources to the partnership model. On the fire side of the coin, all of our departments are routinely having difficulty getting our volunteer units out the doors, not just McMinnville, but everyone, particularly during the daytime. So with the advantage of these two cross-trained fire and EMS personnel being in Amity Station, Amity has an engine that is on, on commercial alarms is in McMinnville, is one of our first units that's dispatched. So we have two paid fire EMS personnel in Amity to get that engine out the door, coming to McMinnville faster on our calls, and they have them in their, to go into their system on their calls. They're our employees, they're managed through our system and our finances, our budgetary process. All of the revenues from the ambulance come into our system. They are just contributing space and dollars. And during the daytime, the station duties, the mopping, the cleaning, the light station maintenance, light vehicle maintenance, those types of things, they're two people that Amity can use for their responsibilities in their station.
Okay, has anybody had a chance to read their packages? Let's start with you, Remy. Any questions, comments?
It seems to be both physically responsible and then responsible to the community in terms of decreasing response times. I think it's a great proposal, so thank you.
Okay, Scott?
And likewise, as I look financially, it's laid out very well where the costs are covered. And then secondarily, as we've talked about safety, it's response time and being, and we're trying to spread ourselves out a little more. We're up north, you know, on Baker Creek, and now this puts us south, you know, it puts us way south, you know? But it allows us to come, you know, from two different directions, from the station, north and south. So as I looked at it, I felt comfortable, and also looking at you, knowing how you really look at the issues, all the issues totally, Chief, that I felt comfortable with it also.
Okay, let's, Larry?
I think it's a great concept and a great plan. I like it. The one question I have is the vacant assistant chief position that you're going to draw some funds, is that going to be permanently vacant, or is that coming back someday, or?
It's going to be permanently vacant until we make another redesign of, at this point in time, we had a one-year agreement with MOU with the union in relation to three of the, three of the captains that were promoted to battalion chief. The two division chiefs were promoted to assistant chief for this one-year model. We're seven months into the one year. We're becoming more efficient, more effective in our communications. The internal processes, management processes are becoming more efficient and more effective within the organization. So I would say barring any union blocking at the, making this permanent, I would see that that's our, that is my goal, to make this realignment permanent for the department.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Counselor President Jeffries?
No, I'm excited about this move.
One comment, as we're starting to step out into these, the more rural communities and these partnerships, there's, one of the things you see of these smaller bits and bites that we're taking in these smaller agreements. In the long run, my goal would be to have some bigger agreements, but there's some cultural differences within the Amity Fire Department, then even though we're all fire departments and we all do what each other does, there are cultural differences within an all-volunteer organization versus a combination organization that we're being very sensitive to in making, taking baby steps and baby bites out of these processes. I believe in the long run, it'll buy, these smaller steps will be more successful than if we were to take a bigger bite at one time.
You know, I guess my feeling about, for the council, I agree with everybody here in the council, as we look at an ambulance service area, the way the state sets up their ambulance service areas, I think not only do I like this, I think it gives us the opportunity in maybe a couple of years down the road to hopefully do this same type of thing with either Carlton or Yamhill, especially the ones that have the facilities we can host. But I think more importantly, by putting, even though it would be an intergovernmental agreement, putting our ambulances in Amity and Carlton or wherever, I think it helps go a long way to building that working relationship, much like Chief mentioned, where eventually, and I think, I don't think anybody will disagree, that we're going to have to find, whether it's eight years, 10 years, 12 years, find another way to fund ambulances. I think eventually, the way we're, only a way we're ever going to do that is through its own taxing district. And I believe that by doing what the chief is proposing to do here, as the people see the quicker response time in, like Amity is south end of Dayton, as they see the quicker response time in other cities, I think they will be much more receptive to potentially, if it's, even if it's 10 years from now, forming another entity. And I think with what, what we're not making off the ambulance, I think eventually that has to be done. So I think what I'm hearing from the council, Chief, is that you and the city attorney and city manager should go ahead and bring back something to us if Amity were a fire, does it, and start working on an intergovernmental agreement and see what it's going to take to put all this into.
And just for the record, their board is meeting on this very subject this evening at the same, as we speak, so.
Great job, great job, Chief. Thank you very much. So I think we have our direction, Samantha? Okay, the next thing we have tonight is reappointments to members of various boards and commissions. There has been a little bit change, and it was a change that was put in, recommendations of Walt Gowell, our interim city attorney, who, Walt, you'll only be here, what, six more months, was?
I think about six more minutes.
Oh, six more minutes. And we do appreciate all the work you've done with us, Walt.
Thank you, Mayor.
So tonight, in your budget packet, the difference is, council, in your budget packet, Martha, in your but, excuse me, council packet, Martha gave us information on all of the people that have been approached about and who can be reappointed to the commissions. The difference is, is three members of the Airport Commission, the Budget Committee, the Historic Landmarks Committee, and the Landscape Review Committee, and the Planning Commission have some terms up in 2015. The Budget Committee by statute, the Planning Historic Landmarks Committee by city ordinance, they're actually appointed directly by the City Council, whereas as we go further into this, the member of the Airport Commission is a direct appointment by the mayor with a consensus from the council. So that being said, I think our, Martha has recommended that for the Budget Committee that we reappoint Jerry Hart and Budget Committee, Jerry Hart and Brad Lunt from the Historic Landmarks Committee, it'd be Patty Webb, and from the Planning Commission, it'd be Martin Kraus-Martin and John Tej. So if there's any discussion around the table on those reappointments, and Martha, I take it you've contacted all, and they all have expressed an interest in being reappointed, is there any discussion around the table as far as appointing them?
So, no. So, no, I just, Planning Commission then will advertise for that vacancy and go through the process in February.
Actually, the position has closed. And we will come to you on the next council session with who's going to fill Frank's vacated position.
Okay, thank you. Good question, Scott. So if there's any other, no discussions or any more pointees, I will accept the motion to reappoint those members that I mentioned to the Budget Committee, the Historic Landmarks Committee, and the Planning Commission. So moved by Council Drapken, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Jeffrey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Jerry Hart and Brad Lunt unanimously have been approved for another term on the Budget Committee, that Patty Webb has been approved for another term on the Historic Landmarks Committee, and Martin Kraus-Martin and John Tej have been approved for another term on the Planning Commission. And that being said, now we'll go to the Airport Commission. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, members of the Airport Commission are appointed by the mayor with the concurrence of the city council. And at this time, I would like to recommend that we reappoint Jody Christensen to the Airport Commission. She has served on the Airport Commission and is willing to do so again. And if there's no discussion, I just need a confirmation, consensus confirmation from the council that we reappoint Jody Christensen? Do I have a consensus?
Yes.
Okay, then we don't have to vote on that, do we? Well, nope, so.
The minutes just let the minutes reflect that Jody Christensen,
the consensus of the council was the mayor's appointment of Jody Christensen to the Airport Commission.
Also the chair of that committee, correct?
Yes, she is the chair of the Airport Commission also. Okay, that takes us to our next item of business, and that's approval of a Chamber of Commerce sublease. So Martha, you want to go over that, please?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the City of McMinnville leases the property located at 417 Northwest Adams Street to the Chambers Building, the house over there, I think we all know where it's at. And they in turn are proposing a sublease to Greg Anderson, who runs a realty business here in McMinnville. So under the terms, it'd be $350 a month. And it's nothing new, they've traditionally rented out portions of the second floor. And so this is just a change in a tenant to their current building. And the lease is in your package.
Okay, do we have any questions, the city manager? Again, it's up to the Chamber to actually sublease that building. It's part of their lease, but it has, that sublease has to be approved by the council. So do we have any questions, any comments, Larry?
No, I don't.
Kevin?
Nope.
Scott?
I think it's a good tenant coming in that doesn't take a lot of parking, which I think works well for that location, so no question.
Hey, Remy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the sublease of that the Chambers request, or the subleasee that the Chamber has requested? So we have moved by Council Drapken, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the motion passed the council unanimously of those members present, thank you, Martha, very much. That will take us, council, into our ordinance sections of it. Do we have two ordinance tonight? The first ordinance is an ordinance amending an existing plan development ordinance with certain exceptions to the city street standards and lot depth, lot depth to width ratio. So Doug, do you want to give the background on that one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. In October this past year, our office received an application from the Yamhill Community Development Corporation seeking approval to develop a 29-lot, single-family residential subdivision on a seven-acre parcel of ground in southeast McMinnville. Along with that application was an application to receive exceptions to some of the city's street and development standards. Subsequent to that, we scheduled a Planning Commission hearing in November, at which time the commission took testimony on those two requests. At the close of that hearing, the commission voted unanimously to approve the tentative subdivision plan and have forwarded to you a recommendation that you approve the exception request for the plan development amendment. A copy of an ordinance has been provided to you in your packet for tonight, as well as the record of the Planning Commission hearing from that November public hearing. With that, I will stop and answer any questions the commission may have regarding.
Okay, let's start with you. Questions, Remy?
I don't have any questions. I found the staff report to be thorough. Everything seems to be included, and I feel like I have all the information I need. Thank you.
Okay, Scott?
You know, Doug, as we went through the Planning Commission hearing, any opposing views that were discussed at length? I mean, we're between an established neighborhood that has been for a long time and then a newer neighborhood that has those common walls, whether they're townhouses or condos, I don't know. What was the general feeling from the notification that went out?
We'd received, prior to the public hearing, a couple of phone calls from individuals asking questions about the details of the subdivision. None of those rose to the level of being a concern or objection. At the public hearing, we had an individual get up and speak during the portion of the public hearing that's reserved for questions of the applicant. They couched their questions as not in a form of an opposition. However, I think the tone of the questions came across perhaps as not being fully supportive of the application. Nevertheless, we tried to answer those questions, and we have not heard anything subsequent to that public hearing from this individual. They were provided notice of the commission's action and appeal opportunities, and those periods have expired.
Okay, well, very thorough information that was given, and the maps really helped me understand what's looking to be developed, so thank you.
Okay, let's move it down to you, Larry.
Yeah, I've gone through all the information, and even though there's parts of the plan that I don't like personally, but, which I have voiced in the past. But the Planning Commission has done their work, and so I have no further questions.
Okay, Kevin?
Could you go to the map on there, Doug? I just had a question about the direction of the road. I can't tell from this map design.
North, south.
It goes north, north.
All the way from Cumulus, all the way up, it's not, is it going to intersect with American and Kingwood? Would you enter into that neighborhood through Kingwood or American or off of Cumulus?
Off of the streets to the west and to the east of that subject site, but not directly off of Cumulus.
Okay, that was my question. All right, thank you.
There is a pedestrian connection, but no vehicular connection.
Yeah, I'm, I have some of the same concerns that Larry has about the population density over there when it's really an isolated part of the community. But without taking any further steps to prevent that in the future, I don't, I can't see any reason why we can't approve it at this point, but just want to put that concern on the record. And, you know, I would always prefer to see infill than sprawl, so I'm okay with it.
You know, I guess, Doug, question, more of a question or a comment? And I'll couch this again, maybe the fact that I'm for developments, I think it's a great infill development. I'm a little concerned, though, regarding, and I'd like to know how the Planning Commission looked at this, and I looked at some of their minutes, but didn't find it regarding the lack of, doing the bioswale and the lack of sidewalks and planning strip, the length. And if I look at, on the Cumulus end, there's the five-foot pedestrian walkway from the cul-de-sac at the Cumulus end. But at the north end, and that's a 28, the 28-foot.
I can't read that fast, Doug.
Okay, I understand it now, all of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're good, guys.
This is part of the new accelerated 2016 council session process.
Ever heard him read bills into the House of Representatives? There, in, there's a guy named.
88, page 88, yeah.
Obie, who reads it.
Okay, that shows it as good as I want to see, Doug. But here's my question, my question is this, is there's the pedestrian access on the south end on Cumulus. Of course, there's nothing on the north end. And if I look at the north end, all the way down with the bioswales, and if I'm wrong, that's a 28-foot, that's a 28-foot paved right-of-way, 28-foot street surface?
That's correct.
What is the, maybe Mike this question for, what's the parking going to be on that street?
Well, the 28-foot residential standard that we have in our Landerville ordinance allows for parking on both sides of the street. Practically speaking, with the width of the lots, there'll be driveway cuts, and that'll limit somewhat some of the parking that's occurring on the eastern edge of the north cul-de-sac and the western edge of the south cul-de-sac.
South cul-de-sac. I guess the reason I bring that up, because my concern is, I know with those being, it's a high-density development with the potential of a lot of, I think it could be a potential of a lot of children living in that development. Access with the parking on both sides and 28th Street, the only way for people to get from the north half to at least Kingwood or down all the way to Cumulus is walking down the middle of the street, walking basically right through the street. Because if there's no sidewalks and no planning, there's just bioswale. It's either on the yard side, am I mistaken, Doug? Did I look at that wrong?
For clarification, there are sidewalks along both cul-de-sacs, but only one side of the street. So for the northern cul-de-sac, the sidewalk is on the east edge of the street. And for the southern cul-de-sac, the sidewalk is on the west edge of the street. So there is a continuous sidewalk from Cumulus all the way to the north end of the project.
Okay, I must have missed, I did, that's what I was setting for, and I couldn't see that in there. So I withdraw my comments then, as long as there's a sidewalk to keep them out of the street, I'm just dandy fine. But I do think it's an excellent, high-density infill project without, and I like the fact that we're going to, the developers put the sidewalks along Cumulus, and we won't have any more open blocks, a sidewalk along the.
Yeah, Rick, page 86 really shows it well. You can see how that sidewalk, 30?
86?
Eight, eight, yeah. Page 86 on the thumbnail. And so you can see.
Okay, yeah, I see it on the east side.
On the left-hand side, it's on that, it's on the top, and then it goes to the bottom on that second.
Okay, well, I withdraw that, and I think it's an excellent, excellent infill project. So that being said, is there any more questions of staff, Kevin?
What's the design for the houses themselves? I mean, just curious, what's the setbacks going to be like with a 30-foot wide property? That's, you have 10 feet here, 10 feet there, you're not left with very much for a house.
Five feet, isn't it?
Five feet setbacks on this?
Side setbacks.
The side yard setbacks are six feet. The front yards are 20 feet to the structure and, or excuse me, 15 to the structure, 20 to the open side of the garage, and then 20 feet in the rear. And you're correct, the applicant did provide a site plan that shows some conceptual footprints for homes. Their garage forward because of that narrow dimension.
As opposed to on top.
And those are average about 5,200 square foot lots, if I remember right?
I think it's around five, a little north of 5,000 square feet.
All right, any more questions or comments, staff? If not, then since this is an ordinance, and we don't have any more discussion, if I can have the city attorney read the ordinance by title only, please?
Ordinance number 5,001, an ordinance approving a major change to the details of previously approved plan development overlay to permit certain exceptions to the city's street standards and lot depth to width ratio.
Okay, second reading, please?
Ordinance number 5,001, an ordinance approving a major change to the details of a previously approved plan development overlay to permit certain exceptions to the city's street standards and lot depth to width ratio.
Thank you, Walt Rose. If I can get you to pull the council and pull the council president last, please?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Rose. Let it show that ordinance number 5,001 passed the council unanimously of those members present, and it has been approved. Thank you, councilors. Go back down to my beginning now. There we go. Okay, that takes us to our second ordinance, council. Our second ordinance is approving a telecommunications franchise agreement for Lightspeed. Martha, you want to go over what you went over dinner, please?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. Lightspeed Networks is seeking to provide high-speed data transmission access to businesses within McMinnville and to other telecommunications providers. To facilitate that, Lightspeed is seeking access to the city rights and ways to place their equipment in their lines. And as such, they need a franchise agreement to do that. Just a quick note for the council, Lightspeed does not plan to provide residential service at this time, and in your packet is a franchise agreement, which you should, all should be very familiar with because it's the exact same franchise agreement that we did for Astound Broadband, for Coastcom Communication, and for, the latest one was our very own online Northwest here in McMinnville.
Okay, any questions at all? Hearing no questions, and is there any other discussion? No discussion, Walt, if I can get you to read that by title only, please?
Ordinance number 5,002, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Lightspeed Networks Inc., DBA LS Networks, grantee or franchisee.
Okay, if I can get you to read it a second time.
Ordinance number 5,002, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Networks Inc., DBA LS Networks, grantee or franchisee.
Thank you, Walt. Rose, if you can pull the council again and pull the council president last, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Let it show that ordinance number 5,002 passed the council unanimously of those members present. Thank you, councilors, and thank you, Rose, for pulling the council again. That will take us to the resolutions section of our agenda. We have two resolutions, and the first resolution tonight is a resolution amending the contract with Century West Engineering for the runway 4-22 rehab project at the McMinnville Municipal Airport, and that's McMinnville's project number 2,014-1. So, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I would refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet, as well as the draft resolution and proposed contract amendment, scope of work and cost. This represents work at the airport in association with the runway rehab project that is required by the FAA to supplement their airport geographic information system. The reason this wasn't included in the prior scope of work is FAA was still determining whether or not the extent of our project was going to trigger the work to be done. They've decided that it indeed does need to be done and have included the resources in their grant to us to cover 90% of those services. So unless there are any questions, I would recommend that the council approve the resolution amending Century West's contract in the amount of $89,282.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Council, what's your pleasure? Any questions, comments? If none, I will entertain a motion. Moved by Council Yoder, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that resolution number 2,016-1, amending the contract with Century West Engineering for the runway 422 rehabilitation project at the McMinnville Municipal Airport. Project number 2,014-1 was approved unanimously of those members present. Thank you, council. That takes us to our second resolution tonight, and that's Resolution 2,016-2, consenting to the transfer of the fixed base operation lease providing exclusive use of the east hangar, office building, and the west hangar, including facilities for dispensing fuel located on the grounds of McMinnville Municipal Airport. So, Mike, you want to go ahead and give us the background of this one, please?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you will recall, last fall, we completed a request for proposal process for a new fixed base operator at the airport to take over the FBO operations effective July 1st of this calendar year. Cirrus Aviation has the current fixed base operator lease that extends through June 30 of 2016. Connect Aviation was chosen to be. Connect Aviation was chosen to be the new FBO operator, and they have worked with Cirrus Aviation to, to negotiate a transfer of Cirrus's lease, and they will operate the FBO between now and, and the end of that lease, which is June 30th. We'll be working on the new lease that will become before the airport commission and subsequently to the council, that will be effective July 1st, but Cirrus's lease does allow for a transfer with the concurrence of the city, and so what Connect and Cirrus are asking you this evening is to allow for that transfer, and that allows them to get a head start on the services they'll be providing after July 1st.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any ques, any questions in the council, Remy? Scott? Any down at this end? If not, that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Send it.
So move by Councilor Drapkin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, was that you, Larry? By Councilor Yoder, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that resolution number 2,016-2, consenting to the transfer of the fixed base oper, operator lease has been approved, and now you guys are going to start a little bit, or, not that you haven't already started, so. So that, that's good. So, any, anything else, any other more resolutions? If not, we'll move on to our advice items. That moves us to advice items, and this is a report for council committees and board assignments, so Larry, do you have anything to report?
No, I have nothing to report, we have not met since our last meetings.
Okay, Kevin?
Um, at the cog, I don't, I don't know if I've announced this last time, but Nancy Boyer is going to be retiring effective July 1st.
This is the third time now.
Yeah, well, she kind of stepped back half-time, but she's retiring, and the, the board has appointed, we're kind of still in negotiations and everything with her, but, Jenny, thank you. Last name?
Mesmer.
Jenny Mesmer, I just saw her today, and I can't remember her name. She's been, she's been the, kind of sharing, she's, she's been the deputy part-time, and, and she's just done a terrific job, and so instead of going for a formal recruitment, we, we are kind of interviewing her, and really feel confident that she's the right person for the job, and so we've, we've decided to move forward with her hire, and so it's, that should be, probably in March, we'll finalize that, that hire.
Okay.
So things are moving as they should, and having her in there, there should be a really smooth transition.
And don't forget, coming up is, we'll call it Kevin's cog, Kevin's cog banquet, since, yeah, I bet you, I bet you, you are, okay, Scott, you have anything?
Uh, last Tuesday, no, last Wednesday, the McMinville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, Committee met under the, the direction of our illustrious chair here, and talked about, well, we received reports on the additional cost to do the, the planning going from where we are on Alpine down to 10th and 11th. And so we're putting together some things to come back to the council, but we had a good lively discussion, and I think we made some good headway.
Good. Remy?
Uh, next week will be the first meeting of the Affordable Housing Task Force, task force rescheduled after we were rained out due to flooded streets, that's all.
Okay. The only thing I have to break up, and I'll follow up with Larry, as far as the Yamhill County Parkway Committee, and the bypass goes, you may have read in the news register that the Yamhill County Commissioners were asked to sign a letter, onto a letter from both Clackamas County and the City of Wilsonville, requesting that the east end of the interchange on 219 be totally redesigned to keep traffic off of Wilsonville Road. The, the commission was set to make a two-to-one vote on that, they have reconsidered after some testimonies from several individuals, and the fact that it hadn't even been ran by the Yamhill County's own two transportation committee or the Parkway Committee, so that is on hold, and I don't think it's going to be signed, and this is an effort being port, being put forth by the Lad Hill subdivision, east of Newburgh, off of Wilsonville Road, who's trying to get so there'll be actually no direct access on to Wilsonville Road, so we'll see how that comes out. But other than that, I think we have a meeting scheduled for early February, don't we, Larry? Third week of this month? Of this month, I think you're right. So we'll have more then. So, any department, any department, Rich, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, we are going through some internal changes within the organization, besides the ones, the, that we, we planned on. We've had a retirement, and, and we've had some other adjustments internally, so we're in the, currently in the process of working through an assessment center to promote two individuals to lieutenant. We've, we've completed one, one part of the assessment, and the, the rest of it start, is a two-day process. So we have 13 applicants, internal applicants, for the two lieutenants' positions.
Did you tell him he couldn't retire for another four or five years?
I, I did not, no.
Did you ask his wife if he could retire?
No, no, I, I'm assuming she was in full concurrence with his, their decision, I'm sure there was some, some conversation there. But, so we will be having two new lieutenants within, in the department, and we have one offer contingent out there currently for a new, higher paramedic, and depending on some of the, the background and, and psych and, and physical aspects, so that's kind of where we're at with the fire department.
Thank you, chief, good job. Okay, let's go on, Mike, anything more important to you? You're not busy with projects or anything, are you?
Well, you know, as the council knows, I keep bombarding you with design contracts for a number of projects, but Doug and I have had the occasion to, with the assistance of HDR Engineering and Sarah Architects, meet with a number of the property owners along Alpine, and we're having discussions on how the project's going to interact and relate to the, the properties on either side of that road, and those meetings have been going quite well. There's quite a bit of interest in the work that's happening, and, and as well as excitement to, to see some of the changes happen, so, well, we're quickly working to have some design refined documents in front of both the MIRAC and the, and the city council a little later this winter slash early spring, so.
Hey, good job, Mike, Doug. So Douglas?
Well, thanks to Rose's help, we were successful in recruiting for our vacant executive secretary position. Melanie Dyer has been with us now for seven days, and survived this first week. If you get a chance to stop by the office, please come back, and we'd love to introduce who heard each of you. Second little bit of information is, we've received now our first two land use compatibility statements for recreational marijuana locations here in McMinville. We've reviewed and approved those and sent them back to the applicant, so we're off and running.
Now, get past the first two, you know, that, that's a good start. So Rose?
Nothing.
Nothing, huh?
Nothing to report, no.
Just, just so.
It's been hard, and, and we've had some, some retroaches, and those are kind of grinding out marijuana, and they're not getting the participants, get everybody started, back on board.
Hey, Martha?
Our new city attorney is actually checked in, and he's got an office and a computer that he can actually get email on, so we're very excited about that. But as much as we appreciate having him now full-time, he did have to take his wife on a cruise, she said, she said that that had to happen. So we, Walt is still here with us, but we're going to miss Walt, because he's provided us some great expertise as we've been through marijuana, and I can't remember how many four-hour-long sessions. So, thank you very much, Walt.
So we, we timed this, we timed this just right, didn't we, to get Walt on board with all his expertise and knowledge?
Mr. Mayor, let me just say, it's been, it's, it's been my honor to have the, the council give me their trust during this interim period, and it's been thoroughly enjoyable process for me. I've enjoyed very much working with your capable city manager, your very professional staff, and taking direction from the person who really runs this city, Rose Lorenzen.
Well, we know that, yeah.
And so it's, once again, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to, to, to sit with you during these meetings, it's been really my privilege.
Well, it's been a bit, real privilege having you here too, Walt, so. I just want to close, before we adjourn, I just want to go on and say, you know, we've had a very challenging last six months of the year, between the homeless situation, I'd like to thank the council and staff for all the work they've done on the, helping to address the homeless issue. Again, and I'd really specifically like to thank, thank staff on issues, especially Mike and Doug, and everything that they've done with the urban renewal and the Alpine Avenue, and, you know, I don't know if, I've seen so many big projects, I know Mike, the Mike's history, at the little time he worked at the city of Tewolaton, but we don't count that, and all the time in McMinville, if I've ever seen that many big projects. And Mike, have you ever seen so much come up so close to ga, gather, I mean, big, meaningful projects?
Well, I, I think the, the legacy of this community is, over the, the past several decades, we've stepped up and invested in our sewer system, in our city facilities, and now, for the second time, a pretty big investment in transportation networks, so it's a pretty fun time to be working on projects.
Yeah, and you're doing, you're doing a great job, Mike. And Doug, just keep the planning, good planning, keep going, and keep us, keep us out of trouble. He says he tries to keep up with you, and we know you both try to keep up with Rose and Martha, so. Okay, do we have anything else more to come in front of the council? If not, meeting adjourned.